Hello, I'm on Facebook, are we?
Yeah, I think we are okay to go now, Chairman, thanks.
Right, thank you everybody and welcome to this meeting on the 10th of March, the Riverside Manor House and Riverside Committee. Item one, apologies for absence. We've received apologies from councillor Lyth that he may be late or he will make it if he can. And we were going to have councillor Pedrick was going to join us but he's unable to today. I will explain that later.
And Chairman.
Agreement of the agenda between.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry Chairman, we've also had a potential apology for absence from councillor Goodman Bradbury, who will try and get here, but if she can't then she would submit her apologies. And also councillor Foden, who is working.
Okay, thank you. Agreement of the agenda between part one and two, we haven't got a part two. Decrations of interest. We don't have any dispensations.
None, Chairman.
And minutes to sign. To sign the minutes of the committee held on the 13th of January this year. Has everybody had time to read them? To read it, everybody in favour?
Thank you, Chairmen, unanimous.
Thank you. Right. Item six, committee terms of reference. Review the items of reference for the committee and make recommendations, if any, to full council for their approval. Can I pass this over to you, Andrew, please?
Oh, yeah, thank you Chairman, just a very brief suggestion. The track changes that I had initially included for some reason didn't materialise on your printed version. So, under section one, paragraph one, that's under constitution, I would suggest deleting the word town from town mayor and deputy town mayor, just because we refer to those posts as the mayor and deputy mayor on everything else. And the only other item on my part was paragraph three, under section one, the committee shall be plucked by, and I struck through the finance officer and put an officer of the council.
That seems fair to me. Has anybody picked anything else up?
That's the morehead, has got her hand up, Chairman.
Councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I have a few things I'd like to raise for discussion, please. I haven't actually got the whole thing in front of me, so I've just had to go from my notes. So I can't quote exactly which paragraph. It says that there would be five members plus mayor and deputy, as amended now by the clerk. I had thought that other committees had more than that, but my main query is why are all five from F and GP? I can understand that perhaps if you had, say, three F and GP, but I think it should be open to other members of the council because we're a corporate body, so it's not just F and GP or just this group, this committee, who make all these decisions. So my thought would have been that maybe it would have been six and at least half of those would be open to other councillors. And then if I may come back on some other ones afterwards, please.
Certainly. Well, I'm not from F and GP.
No, that's what it says in your constitution, that you're about to agree, terms of reference.
Yeah. I'm not F and GP and I was unaware that's. Has everybody, you are Val, aren't you, councillor Morehead?
Well, I'm just wondering. I'm ex officio. My, my.
Sorry Chairman, can I just quickly jump in? Sorry Chairman, can I just quickly jump in? And councillor Taylor is also isn't a member of F and GP. Can I just check that we're looking at the same document? Because the one that I have in front of me, under paragraph one of section one, the constitution of this committee shall be five members of the town council.
Excuse me, I'm just having a look.
Finance and general purposes committee.
Right, what's happened then, Chairman, is it's picked up the original terms of reference from when this was a subcommittee on finance and general purposes. I think, if I may, I'll share my screen so that you can see. I mean, it's largely the same, it's just removed any reference to F and GP.
Yeah.
There we are.
Well, let's see.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, yes. I wondered, going to ask the clerk whether this was a sort of, one of the original recommendations or terms that were applied initially to when this was a working group and that it hasn't been suitably adapted for a full council committee.
No, Chairman, sorry, this was, obviously the version that seems to have made it onto the agenda is the terms of reference that we used when it was a subcommittee of F and GP. The version that I'm showing you on the screen now is pretty much exactly the same, except all references to F and GP have been removed. So there's no compulsion on having members only from F and GP, as the membership already is. It's not exclusively F and GP.
But that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, I would wonder whether it ought to say at least a third or such and such fraction ought to be from F and G, since they will be very tightly involved in anything that involves the properties. But that's just a thought. But I'm glad that that isn't what it stipulates or won't be what it stipulates.
Yeah. Just in respect of potential quota for persons on it, we of course don't do that for CAC in terms of any budgetary commitments, and we don't for any other committees or like such as events, which might incur expenditure. So if members are minded to, they can, but I wouldn't think it might be necessary.
No.
As long as it doesn't say five members of F and GP, I'm happy with that one.
No, it's just five members of the town council.
Yeah.
I agree that as it's set out here on what we've got on our screen, that makes, to me, that seems perfectly sensible. And I think that we should approve that.
I'm sorry, I'll just also mention, Chairman, the second paragraph does say that the first meeting shall elect the chair and vice chairman. I believe that the annual council meeting in 2019, those positions were made at the annual council meeting in May, so we may want to just clear that up. That is the same for all the other committees. All the chairs and vice chairs are appointed at that committee, so you may want to just make sure that that's the same.
Maybe, then, yes, maybe that should be altered so that they're all done at the same time. I mean, what does everybody else think?
Yeah.
I agree with him.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're agreeing. I'm sorry. Why are you actually agreeing now?
On the terms of reference in front of you, on the second paragraph under section one, it refers to the fact that the chairman and vice chairman are elected at the first meeting of this committee. However.
Well, that's what we did last time. We did that, yeah.
It was, okay. I mean, it's whether or not you want to have it fall in line with all the other committees where they're appointed at the annual meeting.
Is this. I personally think it's better to leave it to the committee because when you're elected at the annual meeting, you have to wait to see who has been elected and then to suddenly be left with choosing a chairman, choosing a vice chairman, this, that and the other on that same night. I think it's far better the way we did it last time, where the members of the committee choose, similar to staffing, they choose.
Do all the other committees choose at the first meeting?
No, exactly, annual meeting.
They were.
Other than staffing.
Other than staffing. Staffing's very similar to this, isn't it, in a way that, and I, and I yeah, staffing's very similar to this, and maybe we should go, if staffing doesn't do it, then maybe what councillor Lyth has just said makes perfect sense because it makes it easier then to work out who you're there with.
Yeah.
I mean, these are just recommendations to council, or obviously for the council to confirm if they're happy with the suggestions. So if other people feel they have points to make, then obviously they can be made there. But these are just recommendations at this stage.
My view is, Chair, if I may, that I'd be happy for us to fall in line with the other committees. There are special rules, there are special considerations for staffing, which require, I think, a certain sort of continuation. And when you also consider through the complaints process, how the various heads of like the the council have got to take particular roles. That, I think, does mean that it needs special consideration. But I don't, I personally don't see with this as now as its own committee that we need to adopt anything different to the other committees.
So go in line with the go in line with all the other committees and elect a chairman on the evening.
Yeah.
No, I do agree with that, but carry on. And I think, can I just say, while we're actually on this subject, I think it's quite, quite difficult when a council elects the same people on to the same committees each year because it gives other councillors no chance whatsoever in attaining any experience on a particular committee. So I don't agree with what councillor Taylor was saying. Is it, we have to look at the overall picture. I mean, I'm not just this, but he was mentioning about the whole. No. He was mentioning the whole, he was mentioning.
On block anyway.
Mother is here.
No.
Can, sorry, with this on the screen, I can't see, who's got their hand up, councillor Morehead.
And then councillor Heath, Chairman.
And yes. Unless it was a proposal from you as the chair, councillor Mayne, I would like to propose that this committee works on the same basis as all the other committees and that the future committee is arranged at the May meeting, at the May town council meeting.
I will, I will second that to the chair. But we don't, but we don't take on, I mean, I understand what you're saying. It doesn't give other people chance to be on committees, but they can, if they want to, we don't automatically elect the same people.
No, no. Councillor Taylor was implying that one did with the staffing, so just, just leave it.
Are we going to take a vote? Are we going to take a vote?
But Chairman, councillor Heath would like to speak first.
Yes, councillor Leif.
Thank you. Yes, I believe we should listen to everybody before we take a vote, thank you. Actually, I can see almost from an outsider, both points of Gary's and Mary Lyth's point of view. I don't think necessarily they conflict. For the sake of tidiness, it seems sensible to do the same, then not confusing which committee does vote at different times. So there's great deal of symmetry to do that one with Gary's thought. So the only question left, by having the whole council vote and appoint people, is it likely, or is there any track record in the past that it tends to be the same old, I use the words in inverted commas, not really, just to emphasise the point, crony, right, that actually is on the same committee? Does that actually happen? Because if it doesn't happen, it isn't a problem. But if it does seem to happen, and councillor Mary Lyth has a good point. So before we vote, could we just perhaps a comment, maybe from the chair or anybody else who thinks that that is a possibility, or it really is more of an imagination? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe that it's the same people every time. I think what councillor Taylor was saying about the, about staff and being elected between them, I understand that because as a former chair of staffing, there are certain things that you've, that have been started and the ball's rolling on. And it would be very difficult to give that up halfway through and let somebody else understand what's going on and carry on from there. But we're talking about this committee and I think that we should elect, as all the other committees do, on the evening. It's not automatic that you're going to get onto a certain committee and that you're going to be on a committee that you, that you were on last year. It's down to, it's down to you and it's down to everybody else. So. Yes, Andrew.
Can I just clarify that we are talking about the chairman and vice chairman?
Yes.
Not the general membership of the committee. That will be, that will be finalised at annual council. What we were discussing here is at what point you appoint the chairman and vice chairman of the committee.
Yes. Yes, I understand that. I think we've gone from one thing to staffing and to the whole members of the committee. So going back to where we were, I think maybe, yes, we should not do it at the first meeting, but do it at the annual meeting as we do with everything else.
In favour?
Oh, sorry, Chairman, are you taking a vote now?
Yeah, looks like it, yeah.
Okay.
What about Val?
I've got my hand up.
Can we clear the screen?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's a bit difficult with this. That's right. So we're taking a vote. Did you wish to speak, councillor Morehead, or are you voting?
No, I was ready to vote when you said.
Yeah. Yeah. All those in favour then have elected in at the annual meeting.
That's three, Chairman. Oh, councillor Lyth, are you voting for?
Yeah, I'm going along with that.
Okay. That's unanimous then, that bit. Do you want me to go back to the document?
Yes, please. So is there anything else on there that we need to be aware of?
I, Chairman, I don't believe anything else has changed from the version you will have, save for all references to F and GP and the fact that it used to be a subcommittee have been removed, that it just reads the Manor House and Riverside Centre Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're still going to be remained bimonthly? So, yeah, I, do we note or do we approve this?
Well, you're, there are the councillors wishing to speak, Chair, but they're.
Yes, I know, but at the end, do we know or approve it?
Well, you will recommend your recommendations, if you like, to town council for.
I'm sorry, I can't see because this screen's up, I can't see if anybody's got their hands up.
Let me just see what order the hands are. So first to councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I said at the beginning, there were two or three things and I was going to go through them if I might, and then you can, I can get away then. And I'm not sure which are still on this new one because I'm finding it hard to see it. But the one thing was, we've got through the five members not being just F and G. We've, and we got through the election of. It says within office hours. I think that that's very restrictive because some members of the council cannot attend or take part in any meeting if they're working. And I would prefer us, this council, this meeting, to have the, sorry, this committee, to have the option of you taking place at the same hours as all the other committees, full committees take place. So that's number one. Number two is, I'm wondering why it's bimonthly? Even if there's not a great deal to discuss, and I'm sure for this coming year, there will be a great, there will be a great deal to discuss. Bimonthly seems to me to leave an awful, well, to just delay a lot of things that we know need to be done. And the third thing is, it says, it refers to being responsible for the Manor House and Riverside Centre. I suggest that that should say, and all structures within the curtilage, because we also have walls, parking, the drive, the garage, the container and whatever else, that is all within the curtilage and is part of the Manor House.
Can you confirm where you might add, councillor Morehead, that last bit?
Sorry?
Can you confirm which paragraph that last bit should be inserted to?
From, my print is gone, I'm afraid, so I can't. I'm going on the last one that was there. To plan and oversee maintenance, I think it's under three. Refurbishment of the Manor House and Riverside Centre. But unless you have a better recommendation, Andrew. But I am concerned that it's not just the buildings, it's the, anything within the curtilage. That includes the walls, which we know are in.
Well, can I just, can I, can I suggest then that we create an additional bullet point to be at the top of that list? That it relates to the Manor House and Riverside Centres and all structures that fall within the curtilage of the property boundary.
Does structure also include the container?
Yeah.
Because it would include the garage, but.
Then your land.
Yeah, all right. So, I mean, it would include the garage, but as long as you're happy, yes, I am, thank you.
Okay.
I just recommend that to you, Madam Chair.
So there's that one, Chairman, and then the potential move to evening hours of meeting, I presume, monthly.
Right, I, I agree completely about putting the bullet point in at the, what falls within the curtilage. As for bimonthly, I think at the moment, we're not stretched on what we put on to these meetings. We never over run, so I think bimonthly may not be needed. There's always the, I'm sorry, I think more than bimonthly may not be needed. They've, but that's just my opinion. We never seem to run out of time and we always seem to get done what we're looking at. Unfortunately, anything that we do with the, at this meeting is always very long winded. We always seem to be looking for quotes and other things to come in. So I think bimonthly, in my opinion, is fine, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Councillor Taylor's got to stand up, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Taylor.
Well, thank you very much. Well, just on that point, yeah, I think, I think bimonthly is, is okay. If we need to, if we find, you know, that we've got to get something done in a rush, we could call an additional meeting, so. But in terms of setting the calendar, I think bimonthly and the expectations of, you know, of everybody here would be, would be good enough. But no, I have my hand up for, so really to say very much the same thing that councillor Morehead was talking about, about structures and other things in the grounds, including, including our lighting. And, but I just would sound a note of caution with regard to the word curtilage. The curtilage may extend into areas of the grounds of the Manor House, which are currently managed by Tindbridge District Council. So, and we don't, we don't own the building, we lease it, do we not? From Tindbridge?
No. Chairman, if I may, the Riverside is, we own the building, but we lease the land that it sits on. In terms of the Manor House, the boundary stops at the north west side parking area. The actual barked flower bed is actually managed by Tindbridge and Ida Verdi. So everything within the actual curtilage is the responsibility of this council. And the, so that includes the bed that runs along the wall and all town streets, the beds immediately in front of the Manor House, not the bed at the back adjacent to the conservatory platform, that's also Tindbridge.
Yeah. So we'll have to be very aware of that's worded because we don't want to be taking responsibility for something that Tindbridge is already taking responsibility for.
Councillor Heath has his hand up, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, I think probably Val's going to qualify something. It's not what I want to talk about. But, yeah, I think we do own it and release it, so it's a question of Andrew looking at the lease, that's all. Seeing what it says we have to look after. So that's probably already sorted. Just, can I just, Andrew, go to, I'm not being picky, it's probably completely accurate. But if we're having a look at the detailed print, can I look at, just scroll up a fraction of three, purpose? I'm just wondering, I think it's, no, wrong, wrong direction. Yeah, so I can see the whole of number three, now you've gone down again.
It goes on, it goes on to the second page, Martin, at the top.
Oh, okay. Right, we go down again anyway. Sorry, go up again, I mean.
I'm at the top.
Yeah, that's it, stop there, that's fine. I think, oh, hang on, you've moved it, where's number three gone?
Three is there and it goes up onto the second page.
Yeah, well, if you can go back to number three, at the bottom, that's it.
Yeah, that is the bottom.
That's it, we see the first.
Yeah.
Right. Pure and simple punctuations, I don't know how common you like to change them or not. And it's a question whether it's plural or not. When you've got your repairs, underlined as, as a flagged up with your spell check, no doubt. Are you happy with it not being plural as you're talking about repairs to the whole thing? Although the sentence is maintenance, which is singular, one of those.
That's the verb repair, I think.
Is it? Well, okay, I mean, you could put, change it, put a comma. But the other one down the bottom, you've got semicones, but you've got a bullet point at the top. I don't think you need semicones there, do you? Shouldn't there either be a full stop? I know the other ones don't have, or some of them have got full stops and some of them haven't, looking at them, but it's probably flagged it up because semicones aren't really needed there.
We can certainly tidy that up before it reaches the council, Chairman.
And the other one is number four, delegated powers with regards to. Again, you use singular, I'm wondering again, should that be plural as regards to all the other paragraphs, which is plural? Purely so it looks as nice. I know you like all these things to be tidy, Andrew, so I thought you'd appreciate that one.
Sorry, Marty, can you just tell me where that one is you're looking at, under delegated powers?
Right, number four.
Yeah, here.
Paragraph, second line, where the computer's showing up a query. From there onwards, yeah, with regard, or should it be guards?
Oh, they actually suggest replacing that wording entirely.
Do they?
They haven't, they haven't mentioned anything about punctuation, but.
Perhaps reconstruct.
I think, I think with regard to is correct, to be honest.
Yeah.
We can certainly go through it though, Chairman.
Yeah, okay, just if you want to make sure, you're updating it, it's nice to get it all right. And you think, well, why is it, why is it underlining it? I can see you can use it both ways or reconstruct the sentence. That's all it was, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Has anybody else got their hand up?
Councillor Morehead, Chairman.
Councillor Morehead.
It appears to have disappeared.
I think this is frozen on mine.
We can hear you, Val.
We can hear you.
Oh, yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair, if I could go back to the points I raised. One is that we need to discuss whether we can have the option to hold these meetings in the normal hours as all other committees. The other one, when you said bimonthly, there's not much going on. I would just say at the moment, to my, my memory, we have the refurbishment and repair of the floor in the entrance porch. We have investigations going on into how we can renew our heating subject to climate change and the carbon plan. We have ongoing matters to deal with concerning solar energy for the same reason. And also tied in with that is the roof. There are going to be lots of reports and decisions to be made and items which will have to go into F and GP. Oh, and I forgot the potential new ladies toilets and the potential electric charging points. So I'm sure that is far more than we actually need that we can pile up for bimonthly, at least while all these things are going through. The last thing, if I may, on when you were talking about curtilage, I'm sure Andrew's got them now, but certainly I have, and I passed some to him a while ago. I have all the land registry details for the Manor House. First of all, when it was bought, just then, when it was bought with the surrounding land, which applies. And I acknowledge what the clerk was saying about that, it's limited. And also the land which we acquired when the toilet blocks were pulled down. And it's quite, it's relatively simple to, when anything comes up, to know whether it is within our curtilage and would be the subject of investigation at the time that any repairs were needed, I suggest. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that we were careful how it was worded because we didn't want to become responsible for something maybe Tindbridge may be responsible for.
If it says the curtilage of the Manor House, it applies only to what is it within the curtilage of the Manor House.
Right, okay.
It doesn't include anything of Tindbridge.
Chairman, we could press it. Chairman, we could press it with Dorrit Town Council, you know, and if any land owned by Dorrit Town Council. So that makes it quite specific then.
It's more, even more specific if you add the two together because the curtilage,
Happy to do that.
The curtilage can indicate that where a wall belongs to you, but that would not necessarily what would come to people's minds in future. You know, if you haven't actually looked at the register, it's not easy to work it out.
About owned and responsible for, that might be a better way of putting it.
I mean, Chair, I'm, I'm happy to take on, um, obviously suggestions made at this meeting and then worded appropriately. And obviously it will then need to be adopted by full council. So if members aren't happy with the wording that's proposed, it can again be flagged up and, uh, you know, rather than perhaps spending time trying to agree specific wording now. But that, that's, that's up to you, Chairman, in the committee.
No, I think that's, that's perfectly sensible. Um, and then, uh, it's got to come back before the town council so we can make sure that it's exactly what we want then.
So, can, Chairman, did you, can I just check then on whether the committee meets at seven P M and whether it meets or continues to meet bi-monthly or moves to a monthly schedule from now?
I, I still think that bi-monthly, as we are now, is fine. And I, 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 I understand perfectly that a lot of people can't make daytime meetings, but I also have to look upon, um, your time, um, officers' time to come in in the evenings. And, um, we have an awful lot of evening meetings. I mean, I'm happy with daytime meetings. But then life's completely different for everybody at the moment.
So, just my notes, Chairman, is that a proposal?
Uh, it is a proposal that we stay as a daytime meeting and we stay by, by monthly. Um, I can't see if anybody's got their hands up or.
No one has yet.
Right.
Only to second that proposal if, if a seconder is needed.
Thank you very much, Council Taylor. Um, I think as things are at the moment, we stay with, um, bi-monthly and daytime meetings. Uh, I am, I am minded of officers' time. I mean, things seem to be going smoothly now, twelve months down the line. Hopefully we'll all be out of lockdown and we'll all be able to meet and we'll all be able to have evening meetings or more evening meetings, or our days might be busier or our evenings might be busier. We don't know what's around the corner. So I think we keep it as it is for now.
Well, I'm having my second, second job, so I'm gonna breeze over everybody.
So, Chairman, as I said, Terry Laver is, has his hand up.
Perfect. Did, uh, did you have your hand up, Councilor Laver?
I did. I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm, I, I agree with daytime meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So shall we go to the votes on that?
So, Chairman, Council Mary Laver also has her hand up.
Council Laver.
Just connecting to her audio at the moment. Oh, they are, Council Laver, we can hear you now, I think.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
No, no, not that Council Laver, the other Council Laver.
Hello. Next one.
Andrew, can we remove this from the, from the screen so I can see everybody now?
Yeah, sorry, Chairman.
Thank you. We've lost Council Mary Laver.
And we've, and we've gained Councilor Lyn Gooden Bradbury.
Might I ask Madam Chair that we have these two items separately? The bi-monthly and the, um, afternoon or evening.
I'm happy with that. Are you happy with that, Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Uh, Council Mary Laver, can you hear us? Can we hear you? Mary, do you want to try and speak?
Council Laver?
Do you want to try speaking, Mary, to see if we can hear you?
No.
She hasn't said anything.
Right. Shall we go to a vote then on evening meetings first? Uh, that, the meetings stay daytime for now. All those in favour?
One, two, three. Council Mary Laver, are you voting? I don't think she can hear us, Chairman.
Right. Can you hear us? No.
No, I don't know what's going on. She's in a different room, so I'm not quite sure.
Can she not join you and just speak? We know she's there.
You get feedback from the microphones, unfortunately.
Right, you can't hear us.
I think she's going to join you, Council Laver.
I can't hear anybody very well, actually.
It's not the best audio.
Ah, you're here.
I can hear, I can hear, I can see everything, but I can't hear him.
Ca- Council Mary Laver, we've just, we're just taking a vote on whether the meetings should continue as daytime meetings. Um, are you in favour or against or abstaining?
Daytime, what do you think, meeting?
No, daytime.
Daytime. This vote's for daytime.
I'm daytime.
Okay, so that's four votes for daytime, Chairman.
Uh, all those against.
Two, two against. So that, so that remains as is then, Chairman.
So is Martin. Okay. And then we go on to the next, uh, vote, which is for the, for the meetings to remain bi-monthly.
Yeah.
Right, all those in favour?
One, two, three, four. Uh, Council Mary Laver, are you voting? Sorry, Chairman, Council Mary Laver, are you voting for or against bi-monthly meetings?
Against.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
And then, and then for everybody else against?
So we've got one, two.
So that's two against, Chairman, so that's lost as well.
That's passed again.
But yes, in, in the reverse. Uh, Council Heath does this hand, has, has his hand up, Chairman.
Right, thank, thank you, um, Chair.
It was a good little thing, saying.
We've gone past the actual, um, vote anyway, but what I was gonna suggest is there was a problem because I actually do, do take Councilor Morehead's, um, word on this one, that there is lots of things. You didn't even mention the conservatory, which is a surprise.
Well, yes, I forgot that.
If you forgot that one. Um, so there, there are lots of things. There's nothing stopping, I assume, it's more of a question. There's nothing stopping you say next month, saying, right, we'll have an extra meeting. Or, or would what you've just voted for block that? Or can you change it month to month?
Yeah, no, no, if, uh, Chairman, if a meeting is required, it can be called.
Right, so you've still got the option of, of meeting it every month.
Yes.
If you see a, a very busy period, which I do agree, I think probably the next month or two, when lockdown finishes, there'll be lots more workmen available and things will happen. You probably will need to meet more, but that's fine. Thank you.
Right, okay. So, um, I think we've now finished with the terms of reference. So can we vote to note that, please?
Sorry, Chair, you're, you're, you're voting to make those recommendations to council for adoption.
Okay. Can we vote to, uh, recommend all the changes?
Uh, Councillors Terry and Mary Laver, you're voting in favour to send to full council for, which, sorry, Council Terry and I, we're all muted.
You're muted.
I, I wasn't in the meeting, so I have to abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's passed though, Chairman.
So there was an abstention before then.
Thank you. I can, uh, I can now, I can now hear, I can now hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Oh, good, good. Right, item seven. The Manor House audit, uh, to receive an update on, uh, all the, um, actions that were listed. So can we receive that from you, please, Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. There's an updated report in your packs. You can see the majority of them are now green. Just a further, uh, couple of points. The Georgian staircase, about halfway down. Um, it does say completed, but it's yellow. That should be green. Um.
Right.
The ceiling fan, um, and lights, which are under the council chamber, which says in progress that's happening this Saturday, as is the internal side door, and that's completed as well and should be green. So two more greens on the list.
Thank you very much. It'll be time to do another audit soon.
Uh, just as, uh, just as an aside, Chairman, I've also got some other updates in general. The manor porch, the works are scheduled to take place at two P M today, but the, the stonemason called this morning to say the weather wasn't good enough for the lime mortar to set. So he's gonna be attending as soon as he has a dry day. Uh, he was gonna be using a generator outside and wasn't keen to be doing that in, in the wet weather. Um, we've got an electrical certificate inspection, which is required every five years. That's gonna be taking place, um, in the next couple of weeks. We've chosen to go for an in-week test as that was eight hundred pounds cheaper. And thi, and this is below the level, um, with which I need to get authority to spend, and it's urgent that we have it. So that, that, that's gonna be taking place in the next couple of weeks. Um, we had some painting framer experts visit today to look at the two large paintings that used to be hung in the stairwell, if you like, of the main building. Um, the frames have cracked and in some parts come loose and come away. Um, so they, those are being looked at and some restoration works are also gonna be quoted for to one of the loonies which bleached in the sun when it was in, uh, the mayor's parlour. So we're hopeful that we may be able to get some works done on that. I've got two contractors visiting next Monday regarding the conservatory, and that's either to replace what is there now standalone or with a version that can be attached to a larger scale conservatory in the future. So that's on Monday. We've got Betisworth coming in next Wednesday to do evaluation of the office spaces on the ground on first floor. Uh, we also had, um, a property officer from Timbridge Council visit today to undertake part of their polling station risk assessment for the elections on the sixth May, which are going ahead, as you'll know, for the county council and police and crime commissioner elections. There are actually three polling stations located at the Manor House, two in the main chamber and one in the mayor's parlour. And the, the, the purpose of the inspection today was because of obviously, um, COVID secure arrangements, which we can easily accommodate. So we will be working with them to ensure that runs as smoothly as possible as well. Um, the contractor that undertook the main office renovation works has been sent photographs of the reception desk because we'd like to get that maybe a little bit more modern. Uh, at the moment, we've still got the original nineteen sixties or seventies panelling there. So, so that is being looked at. The painters and decorators that completed the inner foyer, main foyer and staircase decoration works will be coming back to, um, varnish and stain the inside of the main wooden door and the outside in a different colour to match. So the inside will match the, the baluster. And, and also the rear door, uh, by Rogers Cleaning and their office, that's, that's going to be done as well because it's quite severely faded on the external, when it's gonna be put grey in conjunction with the, uh, doors on the council chamber fire exit and the boiler room door. So they'll all be in keeping. The only other bit is we've been notified by South West Water that they are going to be undertaking some sewer, surface water drainage improvement works, um, during May so that they can re-root surface water instead of coming out down by the beach and, and reducing water quality there. They're going to create new sewers that will outfall into the brook so that the system doesn't get overwhelmed at the lower end. This will involve them putting in a new sewer through the manor car park and then into the manor gardens, which would be separate, separately dealt with by Timbridge as it's their land. Uh, and they are doing this under, um, statutory notice of work. So it, it's not something that could be refused. Um, but they are keen to work with us and will be undertaking a, a walk around of, of their intentions, um, in due course. The only other point to note is that the soda survey was conducted on the seventeenth of February and I have been chasing um, for the results of that. However, I have had a response today to say it'll be with us within forty-eight hours. And that is.
Okay. Okay, tha- thank you very much, Andrew. You've been very, very busy. And I don't know if I, I missed it. When will these sewage works be done or have they not given you a date? When they will be digging through the car park?
It's likely to be May and will last for approximately eight weeks.
Wow.
We've reopened.
Yeah. Right, so that may be happening while we're having the, um, the elections for traffic coming in and out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. I'm not sure exactly when and then, um, but it will be some time.
Something we'll have to be aware of. Thank you very much. I saw Council Terry Laver had his hand up or did I just imagine that?
Yes, I did. I think Council Morehead had a hand up first.
Because of Morehead, then he.
So, sorry, my screen's not the best today. Councilor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, could I ask the clerk a couple of things, please? Um, you were talking about having two, uh, different people to look at the conservatory and possible designs. Will those designs then be coming before this committee and the full council before anything is agreed?
Depending on cost. I mean, they'll certainly be coming back to this committee and then depending on cost, it may need to go to full council, yes.
Right, I, um, okay, costs or not, I would have thought that everyone ought to be in on it, but that's just me.
Well, Chairman, obviously your terms of reference that you've just looked at does say that this, this committee has authorities made binding decisions on behalf of the council. So you know, it wouldn't necessarily go to full council, but if it is only for a certain threshold, which I think off the top of my head is fifty thousand, then it will need be, need to be a full council decision.
If I may, Madam Chair, my, my point is that this is such a major thing. It's connected with this listed building, which is a focal point in the town. And as such, it's, it's of interest and concern, I would have thought, to every single councillor and all those who watch the meetings, if or come to physical meetings if we're holding them by then. And my other question to the clerk would be, you've just given us dates of May and up to eight weeks. In May, of course, we're, we are at the moment, um, believing that we're going to, to be back to more use of the Manor House and that includes the parking area.
Absolutely.
So from our point of view, that couldn't be worse timing. Is there any way where you will know whether that would be the first part of the works? And then they carry on down through the grounds as they wish, but I'm just concerned about whether we can get a better idea of when it's going to affect the actual parking space. And I'm also thinking it's likely they're going to want to have all their equipment and so forth in there. And if that's the case, it's going to be a major, um, hindrance to the revitalisation of the manor. So, uh, could we ask a bit more about that as, as and when?
Yeah, Chairman, I'd like to find out more when I meet with them on site. Um, they are conscious that it may well impede our reopening, which as far as we're aware will be from the seventeenth of May, but of course that date may change. And even then, uh, it will be, then it will be, it won't be a full-scale reopening. It will only be certain, um, activities, but it will be more than we have now. Um, so they have asked for what our bookings were like last year during COVID and what our bookings were like pre-COVID to get a sense of idea of how busy it could be. Um, and then we'll obviously have to work with them. I mean, it's not something that we can prevent because they have a, they have a legislative, um, ability to do it because it's, it's to do with the drainage system. So, uh, but they are, they, they, they phoned out with courtesy and were very amenable to working with us to ensure as minimal disruption as possible takes place.
And my one last question, if I may, we're talking about this now going from the rear car park down across to the brook. We are, I hope, not talking about digging up the new drive.
It will, um.
Because I saw a lot of paint marks down there a few months ago.
I believe, just bear with me one second, Chairman. It will go, it will go across the drive.
But they obviously will reinstate it back to.
Yes, I have run it past, I have run it past the council's legal advisers. And yes, obviously they will be required to make good any works that they undertake and put back to a condition that it was previously.
Thank you, Andrew. Going back to your first item there, councillor Morehead, when you said that the conservatory should, obviously it should come to this committee first, but then being such a big decision, it will go before full town. It would be very arrogant, I think, to take it on and make that decision with just a few of us. Councillor Heath.
Thank you. A few little points I've jotted down here as we've been going on. I'll just deal with Andrew first. If it's, well, not if, when it's reinstated the car park, just make sure it's a proper hot tar bond finish because sometimes they just fill it and tamper it down. And quite frankly, that will break up in about six months. So we don't want a utility company just put in a what's really a temporary service in. So just keep an eye on that and perhaps ask them. It's to be a proper permanent repair with a proper hot tar finish and bonding edge. Right, coming back to my questions, I think that's been answered by the chair. Andrew, I believe you said you couldn't remember what the top amount is before it's referred to the actual full council. Might not be a bad idea if, you know, over the, before the next meeting, just look up what that figure is so that everybody knows what it is. If it's 25,000 or whatever it is, because then it would be automatic. But it might be nice to know what the reference is. And there's a commitment from the chair there to actually refer it whatever the cost, which I agree is probably the most sensible thing as it's a very big decision and could last for 50 years. We hope so this time. And finally, more of a question, a little bit of a red flag went up, Andrew, when you said and distributing sewage into the brook.
No, rainwater, surface rainwater.
Right, because you did say sewage. That sort of worried me. So it's surface water rain, yeah? Okay, well, there is still a problem with that, but it'd be interesting to know how high up that's going to be distributed into the brook. Are we talking about from the back of the Manor Gardens?
Yes, yeah.
Right. To be honest with you, is it possible that you could look into any environmental studies on that? Because when you get, when you get dry weather in the summer, roads get lots of oil and grease on them. And when it first rains after four weeks, there is a massive amount of engine oil and stuff that runs down into surface water and into rivers. Now, you've got to bear in mind, our actual brook is not just an ordinary river that goes into the sea. Ours has plenty of wildlife on it and even low levels of oil contamination can kill birds. It may not kill them instantly, but it will build up a toxin in them and they will slowly die. So I'm not really happy myself, you know, with hearing that without knowing what environmental study there's been, how much likelihood of the concentration parts per million would be and, you know, what the report would be. It sounds a little bit scary to me, but I might be overreacting, but I think it's something we all need to know. Thank you.
Chairman, if I can just read out an email I've received from South West Water, which may have some pointers for members. Further to our telephone conversation today, I confirm that South West Water is proposing to carry out a surface water separation scheme in the Manor House area of Dorlish, the outlines of which will be shown. The majority of the work is in the public highway, but we will need to lay two new surface water sewers across private land in order to discharge the separated surface water flows to Dorlish Water, one of which crosses your council's land at the Manor House. We have also identified the Manor House as a property where the rainwater runoff from your roofs and parking areas could also be separated out and put into the new surface water system. The works in more detail with possible phasing will be shown and will reduce the impact of the work, though not necessarily in the order that will be shown and subject to further discussion as I'm sure the temporary working hours can be reduced, particularly for the separation works around your building. The overall aim of this scheme is to improve the quality of bathing waters in Dorish by removing unnecessary surface water flows from the combined sewer network, therefore creating capacity for other flows. We are currently in discussion with Devon County Council over the timing of the roadworks, though it would be usual for work to start as the outfalls. So surface water can be directed into the pipe work as work progresses upstream.
Have I just come back on that chair? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I can see why, just in case in a minute other members don't know, I can see why they want to separate it because unseparated water, rainwater and sewage water, in other words, found and slightly grey water, as they call it, costs a lot of money to process. So the more rainwater they can get out of the systems, the better it is for not just pollution, but also their costs because it doesn't need any treatment chemicals. But it still doesn't quite answer my worry because if it was only water from the roofs, no problem. But if it's water from the roads, which to me sounds like it's going to be, because I can't see them separating that as well. That'd be another drainage system for having separate ones for roads that they do tend to go in the same. So if we're able to find that out, whether it's they're talking about rainwater and road water, or they're talking about separating that as well, that the road water oil surface is still, could be a problem without a proper environmental surveyed on it to find out what sort of problem that they, bear in mind, oil floats on water, the dust sits on the water and as they're sitting there, they don't go anywhere particularly there. They just stick more and more to their feathers. And I don't know whether they've understood that totally, South West Water. That's my comment. I hope others see what I'm saying or not over the top. I can see a few of you nodding anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a very, very valid point and maybe, Andrew, you could put this to them to find out exactly where the separation is. And if we will be, it will end up, I mean, we may not necessarily get the complete answer, but we may end up with more oils going into the brook than we need to have. We need to find out first.
They do have to do an environmental study, whether they're a utility or not. It's still legal that they have to show it's not going to do any harm. So, you know, they can't get away with that just because they're a utility.
Right, so Andrew, if you could find out if the study's been done and what they actually intend to do. Thank you very much. Councillor Mary Lather, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I went to the brook and more water going into it. And at the area where it looks as if it's going to go into it, it's going to overflow because now, now things can just walk across the water without having a marital. So where's it going? Are they going to dredge some of it before they start? You know, it is a question that needs looking at.
It does.
And also, this actually, this actually now is, to my opinion, developed into something that should come before full council. Because I think that it's, I was unaware as a councillor and as a resident that this was going to happen. And so I think for the town, we want to be sure that everything's being done the right way. We don't want to be causing problems. And I perfectly agree with you, councillor Lather. It could be causing problems. And I don't know if that's, but this committee to be decided, I think we, should we be making a recommendation that we ask these questions from us? Or should we be asking it from the town?
Well, Chairman, it's obviously, I'm mentioning it now because it runs across our land, which this committee has purview of. You could argue that the fact that it's going to be discharging into the brook, CAC should be looking at it from that respect. Obviously, timescales are fairly short. We were only informed of this yesterday. If members are minded, they can recommend it to full council. It can be discussed in April, at the April meeting. Or I appreciate the Civicamisus Committee's agenda hasn't gone out yet. So it could go on to that and I'll be stayed by yourselves.
And well, being as we've got almost a month before we get, we have another town meeting or three weeks, maybe we could be asking the questions from the Riverside Committee. From the Manor House, from Riverside Committee, because these are questions that we need to have the answers to. So it falls back on you, Andrew. Could you find out for us exactly what?
Chair, if I could interrupt for a moment. I happen to know that an environmental study was carried out by the Environment, as you can see. And of course, we're not making water. All the rainwater is going in the brook anyway. All they're talking about is redirecting it and hopefully separating worse bits of it. So we're going to get, we should have better quality of water going in the brook than is going in now. And councillor Heath is right that most of the problem is off the roads. It's the oil coming off tyres and that sort of thing and people washing the cars. I mean, there was an occasion where I saw quite a flow of already water going to the brook and got the environmental agency to check. And it turned out to be somebody washing a dirty old van in the middle of the road with a pressure washer. And of course, all of that was going straight into the surface water, which goes into the brook. All the water goes into the brook anyway. Certainly, we should be seen to be asking the questions to make sure we know the answers. And I do know studies have been carried out. I don't know what the results were, although they were obviously acceptable because they made no changes afterwards. But as I say, I'm not particularly concerned about this particular development. It's likely to improve the water quality, if ever, if anything. Anyway, my original question, if I may, just go back to that. If I could ask the clerk, who's talking about an electrical survey being done of the Manor House. Would that include all the portable appliance?
Sorry, Terry, I didn't quite catch that. If you could just try and, it might be better if you turn your video off, which will improve your bandwidth.
That's how it will look. How's that? Does that any better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't even hear what I was rambling on about with the water. Basically, what I was saying is that all the water goes into the brook anyway, as it is. All we're talking about really is rerouting it in a sense and hopefully cleaning it up a bit. But it's worth checking that environmental survey has been done. The other question was essentially about the electrical inspection of the Manor House. The five-year inspection.
Yeah.
Will that, will that include the portable appliance testing?
No, that's done separately every year.
Every year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Morehead, you.
I think councillor Taylor wanted to say something before me.
Oh, sorry.
I've taken my hand down.
Okay. Yes. I'm concerned because water from your roof joins the water from the road drains. It doesn't, it doesn't end up as nice clean water. And I'm thinking that we've got, because I'm forever photographing overflowing road drains and so forth. As far as I'm assuming that is going to include water that comes down, for example, Hatcher Street, Hospital Street, all this end of town. It comes down a long, long way and it carries, as has been said, it carries oil, it carries petrol, it carries all sorts of dust and dirt and debris. And unless they're going to have a sort of silt pond arrangement before it hits the brook, it certainly is going to add pollutants to the brook. Now, in most planning applications these days, you see that the highways will just say tick no objections or environmental say tick no objections. Firms produce their own environmental surveys. That does not mean to say that they are totally unbiased. And I would be very, very anxious that in this instant and immediately we ask that the environment agency gets directly involved with this. And yes, CAC, we're hoping to have someone with, talking to us before long, as soon as the date can be arranged, to do with the brook in general. And it could be raised as part of that, but we can't wait for that. This needs to be, have a red mark on it before the environment agency, that they need to be seriously involved with this. Whether South West Water's a utility or not, so is the environment agency, as far as I understand it. And the, our environment of our brook, never mind the bathing waters, it's everybody else who steps into the brook. The fish, everything in there, it's far more important. There've been huge cleanup campaigns all over the country to stop pollution in rivers and brooks. And here we are potentially adding to errors.
I don't understand that. Sorry, Chair. The water is going into the brook as it is at the moment. All the surface water drains into the brook as it is. So it's not going to make it any more water or any more pollutants. And in fact, they're talking about putting in a separation system, which is some sort of thing you're talking about.
Andrew, could you clarify that?
Chairman, first of all, they've made reference to the fact that they've got to apply to Devon County Council. And second, the brook is the responsibility of the environment agency. The environment agency will be a statutory consultant. So I would imagine there will be no questions asked that the environment agency will be involved. But I am happy to flag that with South West Water to ensure that that has been done. Just looking at the plan, which I'm not prepared to share at the moment because I don't know if it's able to be shown publicly, but from what I can see, the new drain or sewer would be from Longlands and then basically coming down. Penfield Gardens is there. They're creating two outlets actually, one from Brook House, I believe, into the brook there. And the second one, basically directly out the side of my window into the brook down there. And also a new sewer in respect of ourselves, a 150mm sewer width, coming from the middle of the rear car park, going around the edge of the building and then joining with the new one that's going to come across the car park and into the brook.
Can I ask whether on those plans it shows you the existing surface water drainage system?
Yes, it does, yes, which goes down Brook Street.
So everything that used to go down Brook Street will then come across us and into the brook here?
No, this is, that then goes off the picture. This is in respect of around this part of the brook and up.
So it's an additional drainage into the brook?
It's new, new surface water separation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heath.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think we're all a little bit confused and what Terry Lather said is very helpful. But I don't think it takes away the fact that we should just do our own bit, which I think Andrew's agree he's going to do on the environmental side to make sure every dot's been ticked because I still hear alarm bells going. What I believe South West Water are trying to do, and it's understandable because it keeps the cost down and keeps the environment damage down, is they first and foremost, because that's what they've already said in the statement, they want to separate it. So they've got the two types of grey and sewage separated. Fair enough, good comment. But that still does not take away the fact that the water that we distribute, especially if it's an increased flow in one place, and I assume it's further up the river this is going to be pushed into, isn't it? So that it will distribute into the river slightly higher up. Am I right in saying that?
But it's here, councillor Heath, it's at the Manor House. So directly out of my office window, it would be.
Is that further up than the existing one?
It was further up than Brook Street.
Yeah, so you could say there'd be more pollution because it's actually distributing further up. So I still think it's a very odd thing in this day and age, as councillor Morehead has said, to be distributing grey water into brooks with wildlife in, why can't they spend the extra money? I know it'd be a lot. They could run those sewer pipes down the side or even. or even dig up part of the gardens, you know, not our gardens, but the actual green, the, the lawns. Run those pipes down, distribute it just beyond the little gateway by the main road. Um, yes, it would cost a few hundred thousand more, but it will stop a river being polluted. And I think we should ask that, why can't they do it? And I should imagine it's just money because it would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. So Andrew, if you can just get all, all the notes that, all the pointers that have been given to you and get them in one concise um, email. We like going on for pages and pages.
Councillor Taylor has his hand up, Chairman.
Councillor Taylor.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, yeah, it, it's not grey water, it's rainwater. Uh, it, it, it may pick up some surface contaminants along the way. But it's not picking up uh, things like people's washing machine uh, water, which is grey water. So we need to be careful how, how we, how we call it. Uh, so yes, there is a limited amount of additional uh, additional problem, because the water is going in slightly higher up than it's going at the moment. But, but I think it's containable. And if you look at the grander picture, if this water going, doing that does mean that there's going to be uh, less grey and brown water going into the sea, then I think it's something that, that there's probably in, in the round, a better thing. So from that point of view, it's supportable. It's just a shame that we're having to dig up our, our lovely driveway, having spent so much time and effort getting it the way it is.
Thank you. Councillor Mary Loather.
Thank you. Um, I'm a little bit, well, I haven't worked it into my head yet, just exactly how far this digging of the driveways are. Is it going to go anywhere near the pine tree? The Montrou Pine?
No, it, it, basically it will run pretty much in, i- if you're standing at the front door of the manor. And you're looking across to the turning circle, where you've got the curbing at the bottom. It would be just in front of that as a straight line going from one side to the other. So no, it won't go across the actual turning circle itself.
Right. And the other thing, while I've got the floor, um, ladies' toilets. We've not heard it mentioned today.
Ah, yeah, sorry.
Hoping to know when they're going to be finished.
Yes, no.
Have they been started?
No, thank you, councillor for reminding me. I do have an update on that. Uh, blah, blah, blah. Thank you. They are coming tomorrow.
So work starts tomorrow?
No, 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 they're coming, no, they're coming tomorrow to look at the, the measure up the space. Check the plumbing, because they hadn't been able to determine where the actual um, plumbing fixtures and fittings are. And from, from that, they would then be able to determine how many cubicles they could fit in there. And then the ball will start rolling from tomorrow.
Excellent.
And then do we then have get a quote from them?
Yeah, well, they've already given us a, a, a semi quote, because if you remember the record at the last meeting, they said it'd be approximately five thousand, five and a half thousand, but we haven't seen whether plumbing is. So I would expect some plans to be then drawn up, which I can bring back to yourselves.
Thank you.
So it should be quite soon. I'm sorry, councillor, it's sorry.
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 I haven't finished.
So I'm just trying to get into my head when, because this has been on the agenda for a long, long time. Just when we can be expected to have.
Well, depending on what their lead time is, I mean, I'm hoping it wouldn't take that long, maybe a week, two weeks if they can fit it in. So once they, well, once they know what they can do and they have the time to do it, I shouldn't think it would take that long. And obviously the sooner the better for us because of free opening.
Yeah. And which toilets will the ladies use? While this is going?
Well, they would probably have to use the um, the accessible toilet until such time as um, the others are.
Do I know room six?
No, no, the one next to the female toilets as they are. We've got the disabled toilet there, haven't we?
Oh, I thought all that was all together.
No, no, no.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Morehead. And then we'll wrap this one up, I think.
I was just going to make a general observation to do with excess water and South West Water. Um, over the years periodically, uh, Timmeroo can't cope with the system. And they discharge into the sea and then we end up with the beach closed for bathing. And my, my feeling is that this is their way rather than the huge expense of extending that at the moment. This is a way to take some of the pressure off that system. Uh, as far as the toilets were going, if the work entails disruption of the water supply, Andrew, um, and so forth, it would also affect the disabled toilet, I suggest. But there is another toilet up on the mezzanine floor, so.
Well, this is what I said, but room near room six.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right, thank you, thank you very much. I think we've covered everything there. Uh, pretty much so. Uh, thank you for your um, report back on the audit. We are now on to item eight. The Manor House boilers, which um, councillor Pedrick was going to come along. Uh, but he sent his apologies today. He said he really hasn't been able to give this enough time to gather all the information that he needs on this major project. Um, he wouldn't be doing it justice by coming along now. So there's, unless Andrew's got something to add to this, we don't have anything on this item.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I mean, on that basis, I haven't looked into anything, but I'm happy to from now to start making inquiries. And then if councillor Pedrick wants to add to that as we move forward, then, then, then that's fine.
I, I do believe that councillor Pedrick was still going to be looking into it. Maybe you could drop him an email and find out. Uh, but he just didn't feel that he'd been able to give this enough to gather enough information in the time he had. Councillor Morehead.
Yes, thank you, Mia. Just briefly, um, yes, I'm glad to he- hear that he's taken up the challenge because he did go into this um, when friends of the Manor Advisory Committee were working and he had very, very sensible ideas then about zoning. And I'm sure he'll be updating it now in view of climate change and everything else. Um, I think we're in good hands.
Thank you. So we'll just note that as is that we've got no further information on that one. Uh, item nine, the manor house roof. Um, as we're all aware, there was um, asbestos. So maybe Andrew can tell us where we're going with this now. We've got some quotes, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Obviously, this came to light uh, when the solar survey came to do his survey and established that there were indeed asbestos tiles. And then looking at the asbestos inspection report that we've had done fairly recently, or the most recent one, it did confirm um, the presence of chrysotile asbestos tiles. Um, it was believed at the time to be on all sides. And so the, the request for quotes was made on that basis. However, since the, the second um, contractor visited, uh, it was confirmed that it was only the inward facing roofs that contained the asbestos. So this obviously has quite a dramatic effect on quotes. Um, which I will just pull up now. Now, I mean, obviously this has come to light because the solar surveyors will not install any system if we are permitted to have them through listed building consent. They will not install them on roofs that contain asbestos tiles. So to get your solar panels, we'd have to replace the roof with natural tiles, which in itself would need to go through listed building consent, et cetera. Um. Now, three quotes were sought. Two quotes were received. One quote is based on the inward facing roofs requiring works only. The other is based on the entire roof. And despite a number of attempts to have that requoted, I have not received it as yet. So I'm happy to give you both. So the one to, the one to replace the inward facing roofs, we have at nine thousand two hundred and eighty plus VAT. Uh, and that includes scaffolding uh, to remove ridge tiles and set aside for reinstallation. Remove existing slates and dispose of the asbestos appropriately. And then resupply with natural slates um, to replace four lead valleys. And then reinstall the set aside ridge tiles and clear all debris. That's nine thousand two hundred and eighty. And that does include uh, all access labour and materials. The quote we see, sorry, Chairman.
I was just going to say, I, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm quite pleasantly surprised by that. I was expecting um, it to remove the asbestos and dispose of the asbestos tiles as well. But we do need other quotes. Can, can we carry on with the ones who replace all them?
The second one, which is obviously based on replacing the entire roof space on both sides. So you would expect a considerable difference. That came in at seventy six and a half thousand. Now, obviously, that, that's just a note, it's now irrelevant. Um, but as I say, we haven't had the requote from them for just the inward facing one. So uh, I can't really, well, I mean, it's up to members if you, if you'd rather wait to get that. Um. Or, or what? At, at the third company that was approached, their lead time for works was September, which would be too late for the solar survey, as the solar surveyors are aiming to get all of their installations completed by the end of July. So we do have a bit of a time constraint on our hands on that. Uh, not, not least the planning process.
I, I, I think we owe, we owe it to the um, to the ratepayers in Dorish that we need to get other quotes. But I am quite impressed with that one quote that's come in. Um. Um. It does seem that it's going to put everything back slightly, but um, councillor Moore, uh, councillor Mary Loather. And then councillor Heath.
Sorry, Chairman, councillor Taylor was actually first.
Oh, sorry, ca- so I, I, I can't see your hand up. I don't know why.
If you click participants, Chairman, you should be able to see the order.
No, no, it's not coming up. Go on, councillor Taylor, sorry.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Having just.
I've got a white, I've got a white computer. It's one of the really old fashioned ones.
Okay, always a bit like mine. Um, so having just recently replaced my slate roof on our house. It's taken about six months. Um, uh, that seems like an exceedingly good quote. Considering everything is chucked in. Um, uh, if Andrew could please just confirm whether that's a slate that we'll be replacing it with. Uh, if, if slate is appropriate for our roof, I haven't been up to have a look at it. Uh, you were mentioning tiles, but I'm, I'm assuming that that's fake, effectively fake slates, fake asbestos slates we've got on the roof at the moment.
It, it does say to supply and fix natural slates as well as reusing replained slates, once the asbestos has been removed.
Yes, so, 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 well, for a start off, natural slates have got a hundred year plus lifespan, whereas uh, manmade slates are half that or less. So, so it is an investment for the future. And I would imagine that the conservation officers will want to see us making repairs with natural slate as would have been original. Yes, I very much hope so. Um, and yes, so, so that gets my vote.
Councillor Mary Loather, you, you did have your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I was just going to ask Andrew, could he just repeat the quote when it got nine to eight oh plus VAT? And then you said it included something else. And I didn't quite hear.
All access labour and materials.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heath, did you raise your hand earlier?
Yep, my yellow hand is up, but I apparently you can't see it, but there you go.
All right. No, I can't, I can't see anything.
Oh dear. You should click the reaction. Sometimes you get it on there. Anyway, um, yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Um. The price for that roof sounds reasonable. I agree with everybody else. Uh, just dealing with the asbestos side of it is about fifteen hundred. So you've got to take the fifteen hundred off, the rest of it's the roof. So the roof quote is a pretty good quote. Let's be honest. Um, and they have to use special equipment for, for that. They may even have to put tents up in your car park with zones and everything, because it's actually, um, you know, pretty expensive thing to do. Um. Real slate should be replaced, as we've already confirmed, because it shouldn't even be up there on the first place, because it's a listed building. So how on earth that happened? Before my time, I might add, so I can smile. Um, it's weird. Uh, and just one thing for you to check, Andrew, and it includes all this, that and the other. Can you just make sure they are including, which they should do, but you haven't mentioned it? Uh, the underside insulation felting. Because underneath the battening, and they probably have to change the spacing for the, for the tiles. So just make sure it includes uh, new battening, uh, new treated battening, if necessary. And new rain protection felting, um, which hopefully they would, because if it's not existing, they might think, oh, it's okay, but normally you would replace it. Or it might have a, I can't remember what's up there. It might have um, close boarding, which is used, or, or used to be without any felting, but that doesn't stop the rain coming. And if you, if your tile cracks, so it does need to include felting for long term underneath. So that's just something to be aware of. I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. It was very, very helpful. Councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, a couple of things. One, um, it was this council who put those asbestos slates there in about two thousand and six to seven. Um. Uh, as part of the Friends of the Manor Advisory Committee, we did ask about insulation. So I'm hoping, and I'm sure the latest inspections would have shown that that was put in place and that should answer some of councillor Heath's concerns. Um, my other uh, query is, are we concurrently seeking permission from Timbridge District Council's Conservation Officers, please? Uh, that we have the okay to go ahead. I'm sure it will just be a matter of saying yes, but we do need to do that before declaring anything.
Is this in relation to the roof?
Yes.
Well, we'd need to submit an application for listed building consent. So I haven't done anything until I've got approval from this committee to do that.
So we need to do that now, really?
What, if I get permission to do?
Otherwise, you won't get it through by May when you want this work done. And you've got that sewage work going on the same, oh, it's going to be fun.
Just, just a point, felting and insulation is not the same thing, just to make sure you're not confused. Felting is underneath the slate, insulation is on the decking. Uh, the felting is to stop the water penetration should the, get a storm. That's what that's for.
I, I agree, but at the same time, the advisory committee did ask for roof insulation because there was none at that time.
There is, there is lots of insulation up there.
It's been done after that, yes. But in that case, could I propose, Madam Chair, that we um, ask the clerk to go ahead and seek approval for the um repairs, if you like, to this, to these intersections of the roof of the manor house?
Um, yes, I think I just want to um, clear with Andrew that um, obviously, this, this quote has come back at quite, at, at a pleasing amount. And hopefully we're going to get a, a couple more in that are going to be the same sort of thing. So we, we're not ruling out the fact now that we can't afford to replace it because there's difference between ten thousand pounds and seventy six thousand pounds. So yes, we will hopefully be going forward. Is it possible for us now to put in for planning?
Uh, I can cer- I can certainly look to it. I mean, obviously, they may require um detail, specific details from the proposed project, which I may not have. Um, if we don't agree on a quote to go forward. So really, I need to know whether you want me to see additional quotes that you can consider perhaps at a, an additional meeting, or whether you're happy to go with the one quote that appears favourable now.
But we can ask for advice in principle, can we not?
We can, yes.
Thank you.
I, 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 I think we should ask for, for other quotes. We should be seen to do and ask them for other quotes. But we know that um, if we start the ball rolling now, we'll be that much further forward when, and we can call another meeting if need, we can call an emergency meeting if need be, just to approve the quotes when they come in. Thank you. Yes, councillor Loather, Mary Loather.
I was, I was just going to second councillor Morehead's proposal. Don't ask me what it is, because there's so much talking going on.
That we ask the clerk to proceed obtaining permission or at least guidance as to whether we will be allowed listed building consent for the works.
Hi. We have a proposal.
Yeah, but I have to do that because we'd be correcting what was wrong. So that won't be a problem.
Yeah, but we haven't told them that.
Oh, I know that.
Oh, you have now.
We have now.
Right, so we've got a proposal and a second, so all in favour? Right, so we've got a proposal and a second, so all in favour?
I would say yes.
Councillor Terry Lowther.
Where is he?
He's gone. I just.
He's disappeared.
Yes.
But we can hear you as long as you can confirm.
There we go.
You're okay? Okay, that's unanimous then, Chair.
Right. So that's all the items that brings this meeting to a close. If Andrew would like to connect.